Mr. Both.
Here.
Mr. Chapman, Mr. Bramanella, Mr. Giannakis, Mrs. Miller, Mr. Pender, Mr. Sesselberg, Mr. Cassio, Mr. Panisi.
Here.
In accordance with the terms of the sunshine law, adequate notice of this meeting was posted in all school buildings, the administration building, borough clubs, public library, three newspapers to tap into on January 8, 2024. Please be advised there is no smoking on school grounds inside or outside at any time. Please silence all electronic devices in pursuit of district policy number 0167. Each statement made by our participants shall be limited to three minutes duration, and no participant may speak more than once in the same conference.
Thank you. So we have this report.
Thank you, Mr. Panisi. It's a big night for Miss Molef today. We have two presentations. One is our data report, and the other is a presentation on certified student safety. So when you're ready?
Everyone seated and ready?
Yes.
If I may, I want your present to see first, since it's just reading off the numbers. We have to submit our safety data system report to the New Jersey Department of Ed. This covers any incidents resulting in students being removed from school or class, restraints and seclusions, any alleged HIBs, HIB trainings, and HIB programs. So I'm just going to open these numbers to everyone. This is also tagged on the agenda, but for South Plainfield High School, there were 71 total incidents. Sixty of them resulted in removal. There were three restraints. We don't do seclusions. So for restraint, you have to think of the program that Mr. Redden and the special ed department have in terms of safely securing students if they're a threat to themselves or others. So for restraints, there are three. Alleged HIBs are 26, and then trainings and programs are also 26. For South Plainfield Middle School, there were 13 total incidents, zero resulting in removal. There were zero restraints or seclusions, two alleged HIBs, and then six trainings. For Kennedy, two overall incidents. One was a restraint and seclusion, another for HIBs. There were four alleged, 17 HIB trainings and 26 HIB programs. For Riley School, we had one incident, one leading to removal. There was, excuse me, two alleged HIBs and then six trainings. Franklin Elementary School, eight incidents. There were 20 leading to restraint, zero leading to removal, 15 HIBs alleged, 23 HIB trainings, and 32 HIB programs. For Grant, there were 15 incidents. None of those specifically leading to removal or to restraint. There were 15 alleged HIBs, two HIB trainings, and one HIB program. For Roosevelt Elementary School, there was one incident leading to restraint, eight alleged HIBs, 21 HIB trainings, and 29 HIB programs. And then the annex had two alleged HIBs. So that concludes that report, and now I can move on to the data report for tonight.
I have a question.
Yes.
What is a HIB training?
HIB trainings would be whatever we implement in the building specifically for teachers, or we also then have district-wide trainings. And by policy, we hold different means.
This is for staff?
Yes.
I thought I was referring to children. I didn't know what you were...
No, programs. We do have programs for the children, so some of those will overlap only the programming. Trainings, exact fact.
Sorry.
No, thank you for asking.
And what's removal? Are they suspended?
It would be suspension. Thank you, Dr. Both. Or Mr. Schmuller. Thanks so much. So now we'll move on to tonight's data presentation. I'm just opening this up here, sorry. Okay, so our presentation goals for tonight. I'll be talking about the Access for Ls: English Language Proficiency Assessment, goals for tonight. I'll define the assessments and scoring practices, identify the students' groups who are assessed, contextualize South Plainfield student performance, disaggregate South Plainfield student subgroup performance, highlight our notable achievements, and identify actionable steps to enhance student learning and growth. So I'll start with the Access for Ls: English Language Proficiency Test. The Access for Ls measures multilingual learners' English proficiency levels. The test is given annually, and this places our students in their English as a second language program. So their performance here places them in whatever classes we have a program for their grade levels. It's scored on a 1 through 6 in listening, speaking, reading, and writing, oral language literacy and comprehension. You can see on the scoring, you have entering, emerging, developing, expanding, bridging, and reaching. So all of these are a continuum for the students to demonstrate their skills, so it isn't just a pass/fail like we may have seen in other assessments. This is more, as I said before, replacement programming and understanding where students are coming from when they enter a district. The scores are broken down in grade spans, so we have grades 8 through 4. I think most notably, instead of going through each of the score split levels, I wanted to draw attention to the number next to each of the grades. So we tested 28 kindergartners, 30 first graders, 31 second graders, 26 third graders, and 15 fourth graders. I'll talk at the end a little bit about our increase in our population, but I think it's most notable to see that we had 23 kindergartners at an entering level. So this indicates trends for our student population. We have a lot of multilingual learners coming to our schools, and as you can see here, many of our coming at a level that is entering. Thankfully, when students come in elementary schools, it's very easy to acclimate them to the population. It's different if you have someone coming in in 10th grade. So I don't mean to paint a bleak picture in any way. I just want to take note of where the increase in our population is. On the next slide, you'll see grades 5 through 8. These numbers are pretty stagnant. They're very similar to last year, so there isn't much to note. And then at the high school level, 9 through 12, again, we have 17 in 9th grade, 8 in 10th grade, we have 10 in 11th grade, and 11 in 12th grade. So we'll go to the next slide. I just wanted to draw attention again to the multilingual population growth that we have in district. So we had 46 testing last year in 2023. This year, we had 130 testing. When I talked to Mr. Schmuller earlier, just to verify the numbers, he actually said that we ended the year with almost 180 in the elementary schools. So it's really a population that's influx. So to better meet the needs of our elementary multilingual population, we continue to train teachers in sheltered English instruction so that we can differentiate their lesson planning and instructional practices. We're also implementing a new curriculum platform called Elevation. This will help bring teachers together in terms of co-planning and articulation from K-12, and then offer more strategies to support our students. Our next assessment is the Dynamic Learning Map. This is a very customized and individualized assessment. It's specifically for students with the most significant cognitive disabilities for whom general state assessments are not appropriate, even with accommodations. The test is given in math, English Language Arts, and science in grade 8. We actually have so few students taking this assessment that I'm just doing an overview K-12, and I did not include science at all. Because we have so few students taking science, the fear of the state is that you would then be essentially reporting on an individual student's performance, which we can't do. So I did not include science in this report for that reason. This is scored on four different levels: emerging, approaching, at target, and advanced. So this is very similar to what I mentioned with Access for Ls. It's a continuum to show a student growth over time. So we only had 13 total students taking ELA and math, and as I said, we had 3 taking science, so I did not include it. So across the district, we have most of our students in emerging, approaching, and then at target. We only have one student in advanced for ELA, and we don't have any students in advanced for mathematics. Again, I'll stress that this is very different than the New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment that has a hard line pass/fail. This is really just to show a continuum of growth for our students with goals. So as I said before, it's incredibly specialized. Special Services Department is working with teachers to review students' individual score reports and adjust classroom support systems as needed, and CSC will review data to ensure IEPs match with necessary toward our implementation. So next up is the New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment. This is something that's given to 11th graders, and it is our first pathway for graduation. So it's scored 725 as passing. And actually, if you go to the next slide... Thank you. So this is considered our first pathway, and you have to have a 725 to pass. If students don't pass the 11th grade graduation assessment, New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment, these are the alternates that they have. So something I want to stress, even if our students did not meet proficiency levels to say that they're quote-unquote ready to graduate, we have systems in place to ensure that all of our students meet the assessment requirements. So we have portfolio appeals that are developed throughout the course of the year so that when that opens in January, anyone who may need that, they're prepared to submit. And then we also offer most of these assessments ongoing throughout the year so that students can manage their scores through the different subject areas to ensure they meet this requirement. So a simple breakdown for the New Jersey Graduation Proficiency. We have students who are graduation-ready. For 2024, we had 86.6% of our high school 11th grade students ready to graduate as per ELA. You can see here the state's average would be 1.6. And then for math, the state was at 54.7, and we were at 63.5. As you scroll through the next slide, these will be on the website. This is all the subgroup data working down for ELA and for mathematics. You can just scroll to the last slide. We've heard NJGPA data trends in national plan. So one thing I really wanted to focus on, last year when I gave this presentation, I remember talking about the math scores and being so hesitant to even have to report out on them because after COVID, they then plummeted so poorly. And so I just want to show that from last year to this year, we went from a 56.7% graduation-ready for mathematics, and we're now at 63.5%. So I think that's a pretty happy increase, and I really appreciate all the work, the teachers, the administration, and everyone just to support our kids and help them get there. We still have a long way to go to get back to our pre-COVID scores, but I think this is an indication for our 11th grade class and future graduates. It's really positive, and I'm really proud of how everyone did this. One other thing to note, historically underperforming groups are actually excelling in South Plainfield. So if you take a look at that subgroup data, those groups that, as I said, historically underperformed were really targeting instruction appropriately. And so you see that those historically underperforming groups are excelling. So a lot of our minority groups that are identified through the state, that's a huge accomplishment for us. For those that still need support, we can target instructions to strengthen students' individualized areas of needs. We would do that by using multiple data points to analyze benchmark assessments to ensure comprehension levels. We can collaboratively review student performance and assessment materials with administrative support so that we can contextualize and benchmark progress to set performance goals moving forward. And then also implementing the alternate assessments, as I talked about, so that those who didn't pass this assessment are still ready to go through with their assessment criteria. And similarly, to have those portfolios ready so that when it opens, we'll have that third line ready for our kids. That's everything I have.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Schmuller. Appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, we just have a few other things to go over. A reminder to our parents and guardians that the Genesis portal will be open to our parents and guardians and students on August 23 at 3:00 p.m. You'll be required to update your phone number and email address if you've made any changes. In addition, you will be required to complete the paperwork within the system for the coming school year. Please take a few minutes to complete the breakfast-lunch application. This is important because the information must be submitted annually. If you are receiving meals through the state or federal lunch program, please apply so that we can ensure your child continues to receive any benefits that they're entitled to. As you know, the district is undergoing a reregistration campaign to make sure that we are ensuring everybody who's attending our schools are residents of South Plainfield. So we are reregistering all 2nd, 6th, and 10th graders for the 24-25 school year. All families have been notified multiple times through emails and phone calls. All families who are registered in the system to attend those grades but still have not submitted their paperwork were contacted individually, and reregistration is required to attend our schools in September. A reminder, our open houses, we have several open houses scheduled for our kindergarten preschool students. Please check your district's registered email for those dates and times. And we're excited, our new teacher and staff orientation is scheduled for this coming week. It starts on Monday. We are welcoming a number of new teachers and staff into the district. Teachers and staff will participate in professional development, meet with their colleagues, work with district administrators, and spend time with officers and member representatives of the SPEA. We are excited to welcome them to our district. All principals will be sending out their welcome email to our district families in the next week. The email will include information specific to the school, including drop-off and pickup procedures, information on the breakfast and lunch program, before and after care, which is available in the elementary schools and grant. And we will continue to work on finding staff for the preschool along with other information that pertains specifically to the school. We're looking forward to a great school year and welcoming our students back for September 4. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Board members, comments on presentations? I mean, it's usually there because we have student presentations, but since we haven't already given two presentations, are there any questions on D and C?
Both.
Hi, Mary. Great presentations always. Can we see, so for NJGPA specifically, can we look at like a five-year or 10-year cohort model to see? Because I know we're acknowledging that the scores are improving, but can we see what it looks like over a period of time to understand the trends a little bit better?
Absolutely. I can send that home to the board in the ready packet and then include it on the website posting for the presentation.
Perfect. And then one more question in terms of Access for Ls. I'm looking at how we're not... I know there's a scale that we're looking at from entering to reaching, but I know no one's even touching reaching. Can you expand a little bit on like this scale? Because looking at the criteria for reaching its nose and use a social and academic language at the highest level measured by this test. So I'm trying to see where that benchmark is for the highest level measured by this. Is it reachable is the question at the end of the day.
I think that it is reachable. Something to note about looking at these scores K through 12, it isn't standardized cohorts like we might see for the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment. A lot of our students are coming and going, so we have a transient population. Sometimes you are multilingual students. So the influx that we have in kindergarten, you know, you would hope in looking at this that between K through 4, we would see more of a cohort progression. But I think we have to flip outside of that mindset because not all of these students have been with us for a long time. And so therefore, it's hard to push them to that final level where they would really be graduating out of multilingual instruction and the ESL program and be completely, I don't want to say unsupported, but they would be mixed with the general population without those specialized ESL classes.
Thank you. Bill?
Yeah, it's great to see the numbers are including, are increasing and getting better over time here. But I just wanted to commend the teachers and the staff and everybody who are working on the ground with the students who are developing the programs and working with the students to really get those numbers up. So please pass that along.
You know, I think it's also important to note that in addition to our growing ESL population, we are seeing a number of students entering our district throughout the year that have, they're entering in, let's say, grade 9, and they haven't been in school in whatever their home country is since maybe 4th, 5th, or 6th grade. So it's difficult for the district, it's difficult for the teachers, that they're still trying to follow the curriculum and do what they need to do as far as what the state's telling them to do, and they're working with students who are facing a language barrier but also facing the fact that they don't have those skills.
I just want to thank Mary for her job well done. She always gives us good information. I really appreciate it. It's important to rest in know how our students are doing, and it seems like, you know, everybody in the district's doing a good job. We're starting to see improved test scores. The pandemic really hurt us, and it's really good to see that that our students are progressing nicely.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. It suggested that, so we go into executive and everything. Instead of waiting until the very end to have public comments on anything, that I would open it up now for public comments on any item. That would mean at the end of the meeting, we wouldn't have public comments there. So self-introduction, any comments on any item?
Good evening, everyone. Good evening. Good evening, everyone. I'm Cheryl Hughes. I am a helping preside teacher in the district, also a coach. I was Don Panzarella's assistant coach this year and last year. And I would like to start by saying I'm so thankful to be given the opportunity to teach and coach in South Plainfield for the past 24 years. I am also grateful to have played for and coached with the softball legend, Don Panzarella. Although I was hesitant to speak tonight, being concerned about retribution, I could not leave without speaking about what transpired during the 2023-2024 softball seasons. The coaching staff and I experienced parents of players being allowed to call us into meetings and berate us without any offense or support from administrators. Parents questioned us about coaching decisions we were making in various games. At one game in particular, a parent was pacing outside the dugout and yelling and making comments in front of the athletic director and trainer. Again, a parent driving past a dugout many times in the parking lot in an intimidating manner. Again, a parent yelling directly at the athletic director in the parking lot as well as punching the valve cart, which she sat with another staff member. This intimidation and how we were treated was a complete lack of support and was wrong from top to bottom. I would also like to address what occurred at the last board meeting. Some of the board members gave opinions about people making comments on social media regarding the articles of Coach Panzarella's resignation. You implied that they didn't know the whole story and that people should not make these comments, and when they didn't have all facts. I would like to bring to everybody's attention that most of all the comments were true, positive, and many were from past players and their experiences who have played for Coach Panzarella and being a part of the amazing softball program here. Coach Panzarella, despite his desire to continue coaching, felt compelled to resign due to these repeated and continuing circumstances being allowed from outside influences and lack of administrative support. Those are the facts. It's only one story, and that's the simple truth. We're talking about a coach that had 55 girls, 55, go on to play college-level softball. 20 players go on to coach softball, both in high school and at the college level. Six of those players, who are being here tonight, were named All-American. He's never had a losing season, and none with more than eight losses in the average of 20 months of seasons. Crazy statistic. 60 times Coach of the Year, being chosen by his peers in newspapers, twice the National Federation of School Coaches Association, and in 1997 was inducted into the New Jersey Coaches Hall of Fame. And in 2013, he had a field name after him. I just want to ask the board members, and a lot of you guys know me, and you know Coach Panz, who aren't necessarily connected right now to the softball program. I understand that. You chose to make comments about us while not really knowing the whole story. Instead, we should be celebrating the man who, despite going through hell, which he did, he went through hell this season, and I can attest to that because I was there, coached the team to a 21-5 record. We won the GMC County Championship, and he also won. He also was named Coach of the Year. Why aren't board members outraged that we lost the man who has given South Plainfield 43 record-breaking years and has won more games than he's won in history at the New Jersey softball? How to get that off my chest? And thank you for listening.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Good evening. I'm Sally Gillis, 2054. What am I having you? I came to this board two years ago to make you aware of an issue within the district. And I truly hope and pray that one of you would listen to my words and have heart to at least investigate what happened. I often wondered if any of you ever took the time to investigate and to look into it further. I only came to you in the hopes of preventing it from happening to someone else. But now I know that none of you did anything after I spoke because otherwise, my former softball coach would not have resigned. This board administration should be ashamed of themselves for allowing this behavior to continue in this district. I did speak to the observer because, obviously, the board didn't care what I went through. The people of South Plainfield deserve to know what is happening to the dedicated educators in our town. Somebody needs to stop this madness. Harassment and bullying is not okay anywhere. If I was intrigued this way, I would probably still be teaching today, just like Panz should be on the softball field next season. I admire all of you that you volunteered your time being on the board. However, you also took an oath to follow a code of ethics, and it appears that not everyone is following it. South Plainfield has lost one of the state's greatest coaches of all time. You keep saying there's two sides to the story. Then tell us. Panz is one of the most loyal, honest, trustworthy people I have ever met. He has given 43 years of loyal dedication, and he built the program to the ground up. And for him to be so disrespected by the superintendent and board members proves to me that none of you took me seriously back in March of 2022. Because if you did, maybe this would, we wouldn't have lost the number-one coach in New Jersey. Please do something to stop this madness. Don't let this happen to more people in our district. This behavior should not be acceptable to the board. Do any of you care enough to stand up for what is right?
Nope.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Well, my name is Nancy Cattala. 35 years teaching in Woodbridge Township School District and John F. Kennedy High School. I have known Don since he started coaching softball in 1982, and I was coaching at JFK. We've been friends and rivals ever since. I always respected the quality of his players, how they carried themselves on the field, which is a reflection of their coach. Since 2010, I've had a front seat. I have been a volunteer with the program, primarily keeping a book for him on game days. And I came to appreciate him even more. His coaching, his teaching, maintaining his field, his senior night, his end-of-the-year banquet, the Senior All-Star Game, which he helped start and ran for years. Not every program does this. The students and athletes here at South Plainfield were blessed to have someone who cared so much and gave so much, year in and year out. He is tireless, and he loves this program. He loves this town. I should be here tonight with Coach Panzarella because the Board of Education is honoring him with a resolution, or a plaque, or something for his unparalleled success as a coach, his career of treating his players as athletes, expecting from them the same loyalty and dedication that he gave to this program for 43 seasons. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, I'll close that. So just emphasize that when we come back at the end, there's not going to be any public comments. And our attorney just wants to make a statement.
Yes, so this board, its members take their ethical responsibilities extremely seriously. We are constrained by the law about what we can say about confidential personnel matters in public. The law does not allow us generally to comment on current or even past employees in a public arena. The only exception would be if folks are willing to sign full releases holding the board harmless for any comments that were made. The board might consider speaking more publicly about this issue and this matter, but at this point, without those, we are not able to respond.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, resolved pursuant to help the public meetings act that the board meet in closed session to discuss confidential matters pertaining to personnel, student matters, and attorney-client privilege, be resolved that the matters discussed in closed session shall be made public soon as possible when the need is confidential or longer exists. Do I have my motion?
Removed.
Second.
Both, please.
Mr. Both?
Yes.
Mr. Giannakis?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Pender?
Yes.
Mr. Sesselberg?
Yes.
Mr. Cassio?
Yes.
Mr. Panisi? Yes. Okay, we're going into executive session. When we come back, we're just going to go through the agenda. You're welcome to stay, but there won't be any... You're welcome to stay, but there won't be any more public comments at the end. Okay, it'll be about a half hour. Thank you. Agenda, this is, so back to my executive sessions. Yes.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to amend the business on page three. Under the business office, our second goal, that the district will design and cross, will design a process and implement to cross-train district employees.
I'm sorry, process to cross-train and implement?
And implement.
They're not just designing, but actually...
Designing a process, right?
I want her words.
What, how a bird can walk.
Designed, I mean.
By affirmation, is everybody in favor of that amendment?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, any others? Okay, moving on, rule of board goes for the 2024-2025 year.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, see, can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Both?
Yes.
Mr. Jeanakis?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Pender?
Yes.
Mr. Cecilburg?
Yes.
Mr. Casio?
Yes.
Yes. Moving on to 10, resolutions approved prior board meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, roll call?
Mr. Both?
Yes.
Mr. Jeanakis?
I have to abstain, I missed that meeting.
Mr. Miller? Mr. Pender?
Yes.
Mr. Cecilburg?
Yes.
Mr. Casio?
Yes.
Mr. Fanezy.
Yes. Curriculum A through N, so moved.
Second.
Discussion, roll call, please.
Mr. Both?
Yes.
Mr. Jeanakis?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Pender?
Yes.
Mr. Cecilburg?
Yes.
Mr. Casio?
Yes.
Mr. Fanezy.
Yes. Policy A through D, so moved.
Second.
Discussion, roll call, please.
Mr. Both?
Yes.
Mr. Jeanakis?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Pender?
Yes.
Mr. Cecilburg?
Yes.
Mr. Casio?
Yes.
Mr. Fanezy.
Yes. Personnel, A through D, so moved.
Second.
Discussion, roll call?
Mr. Both?
Yes.
Mr. Jeanakis?
Yes, abstain on C-53.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Pender?
Yes.
Mr. Cecilburg?
Yes.
Mr. Casio?
Yes, abstain 13, D number 50.
Mr. Fanezy?
Yes. And finance, A through B, so moved.
Second.
Discussion, roll call, please.
Mr. Both?
Yes.
Mr. Jeanakis?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Pender?
Yes.
Mr. Cecilburg?
Yes.
Mr. Casio?
Yes.
Mr. Fanezy.
Yes, any board member comments in public already?
As most of you know, my son with special needs graduated from our high school officially this past summer, or a couple months ago, whenever it was. And I would just love to commend our special education department because he was prepared when he stepped out. All the documentation was in place. Only thing we had to do was, we had our ceremony, I believe it was Tuesday, so Thursday, my wife and I and Kyle went down to New Brunswick to present his diploma. Now, how this usually works is for an individual with special needs, you're supposed to go on, and Mary and I've had this conversation, you're supposed to go out, join the workforce, be as per the law states, a contributing member of society. We've done our job here, and again, I commend our district. The state is useless. Let me just emphasize to any of the parents out there with a special needs child, get your paperwork together so you're prepared. Our son graduated in June. We're probably not going to have a job coach for him until November, maybe December. So what are you supposed to do with a 21-year-old adult son that will need a job coach to work? Thank God we have a great community in Tavas, senior citizens center is down here, volunteering. But again, the state drops the ball here, but our district did a great job, and I cannot say enough about the people that have been holding us, so I thank you so much.
Any others? Yvonne?
As this is our last meeting before the start of the school year, I just want to wish everyone a happy and healthy last few weeks of summer. I know it's real when it's almost over, but I wish everyone has a happy and healthy start of the school year and welcome back to our faculty and staff. Thank you.
Any others? Sure. Thank you, Tom.
Go ahead.
I kind of want to echo what Yvonne said. The grounds every year look better and better and better, so thank you, Mr. Wiggins, for that great job. We have the best teachers anywhere in this district, and a testament to what you just said over there, Mr. Both. And I want to wish them all, including our administration, our principals, our secretaries, everybody in the district, a great new year up and coming, and let's just have a great, great year.
Thank you. Any others? Tommy?
Yeah, a couple things. Number one, we got this email today, and I just want to commend Lynda, our new major M.D., with this sports recruiting platform they're putting for our students, which helps them get some exposure to colleges and get some sort of, I guess, help them get exposure for some scholarship money and whatnot, and I think this is a great idea, and well, Tom Collins, I commend him for this. Secondly, and I'm not trying to be Jimmy, but I want to...
No, you couldn't be.
I want to thank the, and commend, we've got a great working relationship with the town in the borough, DPW Council, and I know that over the summer, there's been a lot of projects that have been going on, and we appreciate their support with what we do because there's some things that they've done for us, which has saved us a lot of money, and we do things for them, and saves them a lot of money, and it's a Jordan measure, it's all the same tax pool, right? So we should be doing that, and I just want to commend them for working, and have a great working relationship with us, so thank you. That's it.
I just want to welcome all our new staff to the district and hope they will have a rewarding, successful working experience here. And just want to welcome back in September, it's right around the corner, all of our staff who, you know, we highly, think very highly of. They do a great job every day to make this district a greater district than this. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's it. I have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Sorry.
Yeah, we're adjourned. We moved, yes, yes.
Let's just explain, we moved, sir. Sir, we moved your public participation session to the beginning of the meeting.
Got a motion?
Can I ask, can I ask when I was done? I'm sorry, but your schedule for public hearing...